Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
We're going to begin tonight with a public hearing to receive comment on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program proposal for the Simsbury Grange. The Neighborhood Assistance Act gives tax credits to businesses that make contributions to qualifying nonprofits. And we've received one comment. It's from Susan Messino, who's Vice President of Simsbury Grange, and it reads, "To the Board of Selectmen, I'm writing in support of the Neighborhood Assistance Act application submitted by Simsbury Grange. Please note that there is no cost to the town. We've been working to improve our building, and these Neighborhood Assistance Act energy efficiency grants have been essential. It's an annual program, and our final funding each year has typically been only around 20% of our request. So we are chipping away at this work while continuing to serve the community in a variety of ways, as we have since 1931. In closing, on behalf of Simsbury Grange, I respectfully ask you to approve this allocation. President Barbara Friedland and Treasurer Scott Riley approve of and are copied on this correspondence." Maria, just wanted to confirm that this was the only public comment that we received?
That's correct. That's the only comment we received for the hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
I am.
Wendy moved. I heard Sean second. All in favor?
That was Jackie.
It was Jackie.
I am done. It is too early. Awesome. Is there any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and this is an item that will take up again under Selectman Action. And we have a presentation tonight. It's on the Hidden Heroes Initiative. It's a program that provides support to military veterans and their caregivers. And I'm so glad that Kim Brown is here. She's a volunteer with the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, and she will be doing the presentation tonight. Hi, Kim.
Hi, how is everybody?
We're hanging in from a distance. Thanks for being part of the meeting tonight.
Yeah, I'm happy to see this being brought in front of the board. I think we've been working on it for over a year, so this is really, really exciting. I just want to give a nod. Jasmine is also on the call. She's the Hidden Hero Cities Manager for the foundation, so she's here as well. And Kristin and I have been working. Do you guys want me to share my screen? Or Kristin, are you going to do that?
I'll share my screen. I'll do it.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Whenever you're... Okay. So awkward from a virtual. I gotta be honest. Okay, so just a little background on the Elizabeth Dole Foundation and myself before we jump into this. My name is Kim Brown. I live in Granby, Connecticut, so just a neighbor over the border. And I am a caregiver for my husband. He is a wounded veteran. He served nine years active duty, and in 2015, he was medically retired. He has post-traumatic stress, a traumatic brain injury, hip infringement from being blown off of a Humvee, and additional injuries that he lives with every day. And in my marriage, we've been married about the same time, nine years now, and in my time, you know, when my husband medically retired, I really started to notice the cracks in his armor. Shortly before he medically retired, he wanted to commit suicide, and that's when I really started to notice that I needed to be Chris's voice. We ran into some issues with Army Behavioral Health, and I saw my husband ready to retreat, but I'm a fighter, and I knew it was my time to step up for him. And as a caregiver, that's been one of my major roles and responsibilities in my marriage, standing up for my husband, making sure that he makes it to appointments, making sure that he takes his meds, making sure that he's getting the benefits that he's entitled to and deserving of, just to name a few things. So I approached Selectman Wellman over a year ago, and I... Other cities have already joined us. We have East Granby and Windsor Locks among the cities that are already Hidden Heroes Cities. And I shared my story with him and the work that the foundation's doing, and we discussed that it might be a good fit for Simsbury. So here I am today. So we can go to the next slide. So I'm not going to read from the slides directly, but I'll just speak to Senator Dole. In 2012, while her husband, Senator Bob Dole, was at Walter Reed, she saw firsthand the experiences that young caregivers were having and being thrust into these roles. You know, nobody gives you a warning or says, "Hey, what do you think about, you know, your role shifting in your marriage or taking on these burdens?" You know, one day your person is whole, and the next they're just not. And she wanted to do something about it, so she started the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. So we can go to the next. So one of the great programs through the Elizabeth Dole Foundation is the Fellows Program. So I'm a Hidden Hero Fellow. There's one in every single state. We serve a two-year term. I was chosen in 2019, and I'm serving my second year this year. And we work on a local and a national level to advocate for caregivers just like ourselves. We are known as Hidden Heroes because typically we are the unsung, unseen person standing next to the veteran providing the support. And Senator Dole has done a great job leading us through empowering us and making us feel like our voices are heard and giving us that platform that we so desperately need. So that is the mission and the vision for the most part of the foundation, if you want to click through. Let me know if anyone has any questions, too. This is an untypical setting for me. So Senator Dole's experience led her to realize that veterans are much bigger than just themselves. They are a family unit. There's caregivers. There's children involved. There is a veteran themselves. But a lot of times, we take our focus onto that wounded veteran. And so there are consequences of combat, aside from injuries, aside from carrying home the war. There are family members involved. I have a four- and a five-year-old, and they are starting to notice those same cracks in daddy's armor that mommy sees. And how do you explain that to them? And how do you protect them or allow them to embrace their dad as he is now? You know, it's not the easiest task. And Senator Dole and the Elizabeth Dole Foundation has been working to provide research and programming that benefits not only the caregiver but the children themselves, and they've been referred to as hidden helpers. So these children are very young, growing up in a household of combat veterans, of injured people. So it's more than just the veteran, as you guys are seeing from the theme here. Okay, next. And one of the things that was so alarming to me is someone approached me and said, "You're a caregiver." And I said, "No, I'm not. I'm not wiping up anybody's messes or dressing them or feeding my husband. He's very capable. He works. I'm not a caregiver. You're silly." And I still, some days, have trouble dealing with that term. But it's more than just feeding, dressing, bathing. It is managing meds. It is helping my husband realize when he's in a crowded space, when he's starting to get agitated, helping him remember where his keys, his phone, his wallet are, helping him make it to his appointments, helping him advocate for himself. A typical doctor's visit, when he's asked the questions, "How are you feeling? Do you notice a difference?" Typically, my husband doesn't have the tools necessary to respond and tell them, "Yes, it's working," or "Over the last couple of weeks, I've experienced this or that," because he doesn't remember. He lives very much day-to-day, and it's my job to fill in the blanks. Aside from that, there are other things that I do, like it says on here, "Assists with activities of daily living, advocate for proper treatment." The VA can be a great partner, but that's not always the case. And so when there's pushback or there's issues with getting benefits or just getting his care established, that's where I come into play. So caregiver is much more than just the typical stereotypes. Go to the next. So one of the great things that the Elizabeth Dole Foundation first did in 2014, they commissioned the first of its kind. It's the RAN study, and it did a two-year study examining the needs of the caregivers as well as in the gaps in the services and recommendations for filling those gaps. And so the study revealed a societal crisis requiring a holistic national response. And it's not just providing more programming. It's providing support. It's breaking the walls of isolation. It's so much more than trying to put a one-size-fits-all solution into a setting where that doesn't always work. There's over 5.5 million military and veteran caregivers serving across the nation. And one of the things that I do want to mention is, one meeting with the VFW as an example, John Fox had said to me that he wasn't aware of any caregivers. And the major issue here is that many of these caregivers don't know that they're caregivers. So we need to work to identify who these caregivers are by giving them the proper tools so that they can identify and get the resources and the support that they desperately need. And so, you know, with isolation and not knowing what your role really is or understanding it comes anxiety and depression and deteriorating health for caregivers themselves. A lot of times, we are put on the back burner by ourselves because we have other priorities to meet first, and we don't understand how desperately we need that self-care. So who are the caregivers? And as I mentioned, these are 5.5 million, according to the RAN study, and this was done in 2014. So imagine, as folks are seeing these spotlights in the different cities, how many more were able to identify? So does anyone have any questions so far? I feel like I'm going very fast.
No, you're doing fine, Kim. They'll be at the end. We'll see if anyone on the board has any questions. Thank you.
Okay. And as you can imagine, the post-9/11 era and the pre-9/11 era is very mixed, and the needs are going to be very different. A lot of the post-9/11 are combat wounded veterans, whereas a lot of the pre-9/11 are aging and disabled, which we definitely have seen as Simsbury and the other towns' residents are getting older. That's when the caregiving needs really seem to be prevalent. But I think that there are a lot of caregivers that just have not... There are a lot of caregivers who just don't know they are caregivers. We can go to the next. So Hidden Hero Cities, this is the best part because this is one of my favorite initiatives. So in 2016, the Dole Foundation worked with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and passed a resolution that encourages cities across the nation to pledge support to the military caregivers in their communities. To date, there are 146 cities, towns, and counties that have signed on to be the foundation's Hidden Hero Cities program. And these cities, six of them include Connecticut. Our state capital, Hartford, is a Hidden Hero City as well. And they work on different initiatives with their fellows and with the towns, you know, to bridge the gaps. And so the idea is to put a spotlight on the city to allow caregivers to realize that there are resources and to help them self-identify with more information and being able to see the difference... That there is more to a caregiver than just bathing, feeding, the typical things. It really gets you thinking, "Hmm, am I a caregiver?" And then that leads to support, and that leads to breaking isolation, and that gives them a tribe, and that gives them the things that they so desperately need that they're not able to access because they don't know that they're a caregiver. Next. So like I just mentioned, some of the things that we work to do through the Hidden Hero Cities and Counties program is to identify the caregivers in the community and determine their unique challenges they face. And I love this because across the board, I think we've seen one-size-fits-all plans to try to fix systems, not just in the veteran world. We've seen something across the board, and it just doesn't work. And I think that this is a great program because while Simsbury's issues may be very different than Windsor Locks, it allows us to treat them as individual, unique settings. It allows us to educate community leaders, organizations, businesses, faith groups, and individuals about the needs of local caregivers, like you guys. So maybe this isn't a topic you've had a lot of education or experience with. It's a great opportunity to learn more, and the more you know, the better representative you can be for all your people. Connect military caregivers with local resources and with each other. And again, that goes back to creating and breaking, creating a tribe and breaking the isolation. I can't express how much, before all of this, I felt like a three-eyed monster, thinking of, you know, what happens in my home. I'm 30 years old, and I have my husband, who, you know, most days is like a dementia patient. He doesn't remember faces. He doesn't remember names. He needs help remembering where he put his keys, his phone, his wallet. My partner can't drive me places, you know, so I have a lot of untypical issues for a 30-year-old, but very typical in the caregiver and wounded warrior arena. You can go to the next one. And as we know, how to become a Hidden Hero City, so we sign and pass the resolution, which I hope we can accomplish this evening, and from there, we identify who we're going to work with. And I think Kristin and I have that established, and we also have Resilience Growth here, who's going to be a supporter. And then we start reaching out to military caregivers. And it's as simple as starting by posting on the town website, sharing the resources with caregivers in our community, posting, "What is a caregiver?" In East Granby, they're my favorite example. We have really harnessed Hidden Hero Cities by hosting two support groups a month. We host events. And not to say that Simsbury needs to do the same type of things, but it's really brought more of a presence in the Farmington Valley of caregivers and active spouses as well. And either way, they're both crowds that need support. And as you can see, there's other ways we can do that, which I think I touched upon. Yep, and contact with us. And Jasmine is on the call, so if you guys need anything, she is here.
Kim, thank you. Thank you for bringing this opportunity to Simsbury, and so appropriate that we would be having this conversation the week of Memorial Day and a very strange Memorial Day at that, one where we have to spend time apart. I wanted to open it up for questions from the board, and I see Jackie's raising her hand.
Hi, Kim. So in Simsbury specifically, would Kristin and Social Services be our point of contact for anybody?
Kristin?
Oh, Kristin, you're on mute. There we go.
I think that I would be the main point of contact and the person to connect with Kimberly, and then our office can help with some of the publicity efforts and helping to connect the military families to Kimberly. And we also have, you know, some other good partners in the community. The VFW and the Commission on Aging are also interested in this project and supporting it. So I know that they'll help as well in identifying those caregivers and connecting them with Kimberly.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you did a fantastic job. Don't worry about your presentation, please. That's... Your message came across loud and clear, certainly. First of all, thank you for your service to your husband. That's pretty amazing. Thanks to him and gratitude are the ones said. It's quite inspiring, and I really kind of hit it home when you spoke at the end that the, sort of, the life that you're living as a 30-year-old is typical of many of the folks who are in the program, seeking assistance, as you are, but is untypical of a 30-year-old. That was pretty impactful. Got me thinking. Kristin, the... Do we... This is going, using this presentation to actually just sort of maybe zero in a little bit on Social Services. How, of the percentage of folks who may fall into this category, both a veteran in need but also a veteran that has a caregiver identified, somebody who would classify in the broad spectrum of the identity of this program, do we have, do you feel that we have a 90% accurate database of those folks living in our community? Is it 50%? Is it 40? How strong is our tire and our awareness to folks who might fall in this category? But not necessarily, I'm not saying they all may be needing services, but how dialed in are we to the folks who are living quietly amongst us? Because I struggle to think of somebody... I've got two neighbors who were active service members, but I know about them and their contribution to the community. They certainly don't fall in this category. But there are so many of our neighbors who are in the service, and really, ones who fall in this, how many do we think we've identified? And can we proactively reach out to them?
I think I'm going to share the opportunity to answer that with Kim as well. I think we have a lot of different efforts that would help us to identify potential vets and caregivers in need, but I don't think, I'm not aware of one's, like, central database that we could point to and say, you know, "We have this many caregivers." And I think that's part of our hope and our desire in bringing in hidden heroes and working with Kimberly, is that maybe we can help bring some of those folks out of the woodwork and introduce them to services. I know, and we're told, that oftentimes veterans and their families don't tend to reach out for services. They tend to just try to deal with it themselves and struggle on their own. So, you know, this is going to take a little bit of outreach and help us to get the word out to people. We do have some information from the Tax Office in terms of veterans that are receiving a reduction in their taxes, so that might be a point that we can reach out to. And also, I'm the Veteran Services Officer for the town, so I think, you know, we can also work with the VFW and with the VA to help identify people in our area. Do you have any other thoughts on that, Kim?
If I could just add, I'm so sorry, I'm just playing video. This is Jasmine off the show from the Elizabeth Dole Foundation. I'm the Manager of City and Community Initiatives. I apologize for the look. We actually had a Zoom workout training with the whole foundation just right before this, so my apologies for looking a little off here. Make sure to join and just support Kimberly on this. To add to that, and yes, as you noted, self-identification is a problem. When a city or county or town signs on to become part of this Hidden Heroes program, we provide all the levels of support that you would need to get started, from a toolkit, PSAs, from Tom Hanks, Ryan Felipe. We'll help you come up with the social media strategy, if that's the route you want to go to reach caregivers, setting up any types of initiatives. We also have, I have a permanent budget in order to support the city on these initiatives. I think one of the biggest concerns with cities and counties is, you know, the budget is strapped, as it is with where you're going and what is happening with that. We at the foundation have those resources to be able to support these local initiatives that you want to do throughout your city, whether it's setting up a caregiver event around Memorial Day or Veterans Day, or adding to any of the initiatives that you're currently doing. And all of those help with social media, setting up these little initiatives. With Kim's support as leading the city through this and the foundation, we really provide you that backbone of support so that we will work with you every step of the way to find those caregivers in your community. Also say that we have partners. The VA is obviously one of our largest partners, Wounded Warrior Project, as well as AARP. All of them have huge networks and to be able to track where we can find the caregivers that are within your area, especially with AARP as one of our main partners with their state offices. We work on local events with them and getting cities involved in order to find those caregivers and those veterans. Right now, we've translated everything virtually in order to have these webinars with the VA, Wounded Warrior Project, and to have these series. We're reaching more and more caregivers because obviously, everybody's online right now. And so we do that through our Hidden Heroes Community page. So there's numerous of resources and partners that we can help the city in order to expand their reach, in order to make sure that we're reaching all those community members. And with the Veteran Service Officer, we'll provide you with all of the resources, guides, PDFs, the resource directory of where these caregivers can go for help, whether it's isolation, whether it's thoughts of suicide, anything that they need in order to make sure that we get them that level of support, and we'll funnel them to the right place in order to be able to do that. So I hope that kind of broadens the question and answers that for you. But we just want to make sure that you understand that the foundation is here every step of the way. And once you become signed on, it's not notoriety for us. It's a process, and you'll always have myself and Kimberly as the fellow reaching out to you, and we'll help you create all of these initiatives of how we can continue those supports together.
Great. Thank you, Jasmine and Kim. Other questions? Sean?
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. And Kim, thank you, as Chris said, for the personal story. It's often on this board humbled by organizations and folks like yourself with what goes on in all of our communities. So thank you for sharing such a personal story. Two things. One, where do we sign? I think that's a no-brainer for me. And two, how do we help other communities get on board quickly, right? Because we're just 25,000, but there's, you know, a couple million of us in Connecticut and beyond. So I think I speak for this community. When we don't just like to do, in our four walls, we like to help other communities get on board, too. So I would offer that from those of us, at least on the volunteer side, to be able to help out if that's... But you got Tom Hanks, so you know, you might be in better shape than us. But thank you. Thank you for being here and taking the time to make this presentation. So what are the next steps for us?
Yeah, so the next step, aside from signing, first off, I just want to say thank you, you guys, are the first town that's offered to help us get more towns involved for Connecticut. So it's really appreciated to hear that. It's definitely a trickle effect, you know. Any publicity we get will make other towns see, "Hey, why aren't we doing this yet? How do we get involved?" I think even for myself, when I became a fellow, I didn't realize that the Elizabeth Dole Foundation existed right before. I thought it was like a secret society, but now everyone needs to know about it. So I appreciate that. So the first step will be to sign on officially, and then Jasmine and I will send you a follow-up email with some documents you can put on your town website. And from a virtual standpoint, what I've been doing with other cities is hosting virtual support groups. So maybe we can put our heads together and think of some ways to engage the caregivers from this virtual setting. It'll be the first time we've launched Hidden Hero Cities with a city from a virtual standpoint, but nothing we can't do. Had more obstacles. So Jasmine, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I think that's the first step, is once you pass the resolution, and then we will work with you. Obviously, not every city and town is the same, given the size, given the resources, and we're aware of that. So not every strategy and approach, every one is different, and that's where the foundation comes in. We'll assess what you're currently doing to support veteran and military families, and we'll work with you to think of ways of expanding your reach. What do you want to... What does the city want to stand for? Like, what does that want? What do you want to happen? And then we're able to put that together and think of the best ways for those first next steps. So we'll work with you through every step of the way to get that done. I will say, and Kimberly is going to hate me for saying this, Kimberly is very modest. She is one of our most active Dole Caregiver Fellows. She has done a tremendous job in local advocacy throughout the state of Connecticut. She's in a shining example. Senator has called her and spoke with her in speeches and even to senators and other congressmen about Kimberly specifically and the work that she's done. So her being your representative in Connecticut is such a huge honor just to have her and the fact that she never gives up and is constantly giving back to the caregiver military community. Her tenacity is everything, so you're in good hands. We will work with her with all of this to get this together for you all, but I know this means a lot to her, and she will continue that advocacy and grow that mobilizing caregiver effort within Connecticut. And with our support, we'll be able to do that all together, and we're excited to have you on board and start that journey together. But we will make sure you're aware of all of this. I'll say, too, as an extra, in October, obviously with this new virtual, we have a convening week. We have a week where all of our fellows that represent each of the 50 states come to DC. They storm the Hill. They meet with their senators and their congressmen, the state that they're representing, that we set up these meetings for them to talk about caregiver supports and talk about these cities and counties that are supporting this as well. It's a great training opportunity for them, but what we're...
General fund reserves and increased debt to lower the mill rate. There were increases for all staff when others who are paying taxes in are in financial distress. All high level employees are not in the union and could have not accepted the increase in salaries, which I was not to. With so much uncertainty in the coming years due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the budget should not have included the deputy chief and the police department. The staff addition will not only increase the longevity payments, but will increase the operating budget. When reviewing other towns salary structure for the deputy chief and other new hires, the town should review the towns that have pension plans with others that do not and 401ks with defined benefit plans and those that don't. These are additional perks not afforded to employees in surrounding towns and is a long-term benefit to the employees that should be included when determining salary structure. At this time, with all the unknowns in future financial planning, the additional burden to the town for open space and the purchase of the Meadowwood land is unacceptable. The property tax for the Meadowwood land is about $500,000 a year. This revenue will be needed for future budgets. I recently received my request from the town for all information pertaining to the distribution of the N95 masks to the police department. I was told that the letter from Sergeant Christian to other sergeants was non-existent, suggesting that Officer Cormier not receive a N95 mask since he was leaving. However, included in the packet was an email from Sergeant Matthew Christian to Sergeant Horcrum on Friday, April 3rd, 2020. It stated, "I placed cone N95 masks on your desk for your officers to be fit tested with. Cormier is not going to be fit tested, so we will not need one. How can Officer Cormier continue working when he's not afforded the proper protection when on call during the COVID-19 pandemic? Officer Cormier's last day at work was April 16th, 2020, since he was hired an officer in another town." Ironically, there was an email from Nicholas Balter on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, sent to Officer Cormier and Laurel Mandell stating, "I would like both of you to attend an instructor level class for the N95 particulate mask. After the class, you will be able to fit test members of the department. Most of the fitting for the N95 masks were done April 3rd through 9th, 2020, at the Doctor's Treatment Center in Brandy. According to my review of the list of officers fitted for the N95 mask, Officer Gray's name did not appear. How many other officers did not get fitted? Officer Gray is the president of the Simsbury Police Union. Officer Gray is over 65 years of age and in the class of people who are susceptible to the COVID-19 virus. If he has underlying health issues, does this place him in a high-risk category? Has Chief Balter assessed whether Officer Gray is fit for duty? Since Officer Gray has continued to interface with the public when performing his duties, it's placing the town at risk for a workers' compensation claim. All first responders and healthcare workers should file a workers' compensation form to protect themselves for future claims. The models for workers' compensation claims show that compensation could go beyond to healthcare workers and first responders. There could be costs to defend against long-term medical implications that are unknown at this time. Claims could be in the billions of dollars nationwide. Past Police Commissioner Jim Fleming resigned his position on the police commission, stating that there's an ongoing dispute with the town manager concerning the authority of a police commission. Fleming states, "I believe in the rule of law and find the situation untenable. Effective immediately, I resign." The opinion that Town Manager Maria Capriola asked from Town Attorney Bobby Crescenzo about the duties of the Town Manager and the Police Commission are exempt from the freedom of information. However, since there was a resignation predicated on the opinion, the public has the right to know what, in the opinion, caused Jim Fleming to resign. As a result of Maria Capriola's abuse of power, there have been several grievances filed with the unions. An officer was fired due to the abuse of power from the police department. Outstanding complaints are Robin Newton, MPP from the Planning Department, Sergeant Tromboli, the Police Department, Gertrude Ducey from the Library, and Jim Fleming's resignation. Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract should not be renewed. All my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch Twitter, Joan Coe, and News Feed on Facebook.
All right, this one, let me scroll down. Is from Stephen and Lisa Antonio. "Hi, I am writing regarding the sale and purchase of open space by the town of Simsbury. I understand the natural knee-jerk response that many have when the topic of open space is mentioned. Is my opinion that a well-thought-out plan will most certainly yield a more beneficial result than a reflexive response? I kindly submit the following points regarding this topic. The town of Simsbury owns one out of every three acres of land in Simsbury. As such, this large volume of land yields absolutely no tax revenue. In fact, this land costs the town both financially as well as in the form of time and resources. Some of this land is in the form of orphaned parcels and that there is no way for any residents to enjoy this land simply because there's no access to it or view of it. My point is not that we should try to disperse a vast quantities of open land, but that we should be businesslike in our approach. It would be more prudent to methodically, and I think logically, in regards to how much and where the town owns this land. The only true value of an orphaned parcel is that it is land that cannot be developed. There are several benefits to selling these less desirable orphaned parcels. The true value of open space to the public is that it cannot be developed, but these orphaned parcels could be sold with a conservation easement that would still prohibit any development on these parcels. The sale of these orphaned parcels would place them on the tax rolls and yield the town income. The transfer of these small parcels to private landowners shifts the burden of maintenance and liability onto that same owner. Literally, nothing is lost as these parcels have no access to our residents. Funds derived from the sale of orphaned parcels could be redirected to acquire more strategically beneficial parcels for our community's use and preservation, including but not limited to sports and recreational fields, bike trails, and preserving our visible open vistas. At many times over the years, our town has had the opportunity to purchase some very desirable parcels that have become functional assets to our town. In fact, other such opportunities have recently been presented. This is regarding the Meadowwood development. Originally slated to be almost 300 new homes, this would, that we could strategically partner with the state and other revenue sources to fund the purchase of this desirable land and ensure its preservation. This would be far more desirable asset for our town and townspeople, especially in the form of a cohesive area with many access points and scenic vistas in exchange for random orphaned parcels. In the course of full disclosure, I would like to acknowledge some opportunities I am involved in. I am pursuing the purchase of one such orphaned parcel of land is approximately one acre and it is described as a crooked finger in my backyard. At the present time, there are no building restrictions on this land and I'm offering to permanently restrict the potential excuse me, for development on it in the form of conservation easement. I am also offering the full market value for this land, an amount professionally calculated by an independent appraiser and confirmed by our own town assessor. As a separate but co-mingled opportunity, we are willing to grant the town the ability to create a bike and pedestrian trail across a substantial amount of commercial land we own. This will allow the connection of our existing greenway to the Curtis Park fields and eventually Terrafill. And beyond, monetary valuation for this exchange was calculated by an independent appraiser hired by the town of Simsbury. I am offering the town almost a 20% discount from the established fair market value. I appreciate the time and energy so many people put towards keeping Simsbury beautiful and we are proud to also be stewards of our open spaces as we move forward. Sincerely, Stephen and Lisa Antonio."
Thank you, Sean, for assisting me with the reading. That concludes our public audience portion of the meeting tonight. In the future, if anyone wants to share public audience, they can send an email ahead of our meetings to our town clerk, Erica Butler, at ebutler@simsbury-ct.gov. We're going to move into my first selectman's report now and then the town manager's report. I want to begin by acknowledging the Memorial Day holiday on Monday. While we were not able to commemorate this holiday with the usual ceremonies and parades, our veterans groups worked with SCTV to put together a beautiful ceremony that our residents can watch virtually at simsburytv.org. I also want to acknowledge the VFW Post 1926 and American Legion Post 82 for their work on behalf of our veteran community throughout the year. On May 19th, the Board of Finance adopted our town budget through the 2021 fiscal year and set the mill rate to 37.09. This brings our mill rate, including the Fire District mill rate of 1.19, to a total of 38.28 for the upcoming fiscal year. This results in a modest decrease in taxes, about $50 for the median value home. The Board of Finance adopting the budget marks a departure from our usual process, which involves the public voting on the budget referendum. Our annual referendum is canceled this year because of the COVID-19 virus. During last night's Board of Education meeting, that was May 26th, the Board unanimously voted to direct Tekton Architects to complete the Long Range Facilities Master Plan for the Simsbury Public Schools by prioritizing the option of a sixth grade addition to Henry James and renovate as new project at Latimer Lane as the first capital improvement projects in that timeline. Once the formal plan is completed, the conversation will move toward the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance for an analysis of the town's ability to fund identified projects over the long term. The Board of Ed has held more than 20 meetings to gather input from the community and share information. In the next step, Tekton Architects will share a presentation with the Board of Finance at their July 26th meeting. Also, as we look ahead to the fall, the Return to Simsbury Schools Task Force is proactively assessing how education will be delivered. The task force is split into two parts. There's one that's focusing on teaching and learning and the other's focusing on the operational needs in an environment where requirements are ever-changing. This work is being led by education professionals with input from the parent community. Please reach out to any member of the Board of Education or the superintendent's office with any questions. The town is considering a significant acquisition of open space on the north side of Simsbury, known as Meadowwood. The area was to be the site of a housing development off of Poskins and Fire Town Roads. The town has engaged the services of Trust for Public Land to explore acquiring the nearly 300-acre property. A half of it would be preserved as a, a part would be farmland and a small portion would be used for athletic fields. The land does have historical value and the project would also involve the preservation of several tobacco bonds. The total purchase price would be about $6 million, although the town's portion would be 2.2 million, with the rest coming from grants. You can view a presentation of the project on the Open Space Committee's page of our town website. The Board of Selectmen has referred this project to numerous boards and commissions for comment and if we were to ultimately acquire this parcel, it would be decided by the public at referendum. The Board of Selectmen has made permanent the Simsbury Public Library's Find Free Initiative. Starting last summer, the library launched a pilot program where it stopped charging late fees for most of its material. At our last meeting on May 11th, the Board of Selectmen heard a presentation from Rachel Gravel, the library's head of borrowing and technical services. The intent of the Find Free Initiative is to expand access to the library's materials, especially among younger people. And one more item, Town Manager Maria Capriola's three-year contract expires at the end of January 2021. Ms. Capriola is Simsbury's first town manager since we transitioned to this new form of government. The Personnel Subcommittee has been tasked with making a recommendation on whether to extend her contract. At the Subcommittee's June 11th meeting, we'll be discussing our recommendation and we encourage public participation in this process. We welcome your thoughts, feedback, any input that you'd like to provide. You can send me an email before June 11th and I'll share that feedback with the Personnel Subcommittee. Please indicate in your email if you'd like it read out loud at the meeting. My email is ewellman@simsbury-ct.gov or you can call me at 860-658-3231. Sean Askam and Wendy Nextu, these are also members of Personnel and you can feel free to reach out to any of us. I'll turn things over now to Maria with the Town Manager's report.
Great, thanks, Eric. Hello, everyone. Leading off with the coronavirus response efforts from staff, our town buildings do remain close to the public at this time. We're anticipating that that will last at least through July 5th. Our staff is continuing to work in our administrative buildings on a limited basis. And again, we're encouraging folks to conduct their town business by phone, mail, email, and virtually through our online services. Our transfer station has reopened with modified practices, but it is open with full services. And we also recently, in a coordinated effort with the Board of Education, reopened our tennis courts. We are currently allowing recreational play at our courts for members of the same households. Our town parks, open space parcels and trails remain open for walking, hiking and cycling. We do want to remind folks that if you are using our parcels or our trails, to please maintain social distancing. Our staff is currently planning for a soft reopening of our municipal services programs and buildings for the summer. This generally will involve for our administrative staff returning on a rotating basis, aligning with Phase Two of the state's reopening plans. Our library staff has been diligently working on rolling out a curbside pickup program for library materials, so that has begun and will be fully going by June 1st. Tentatively around June 22nd, our residents will be able to make appointments with staff to conduct business in person that can't be conducted, you know, either by, again, phone, email, et cetera. Summer camp is tentatively scheduled to begin on June 22nd. We'll be operating at about two-thirds our normal capacity and with modified practices. And we have received permission from the state to operate our camp program for the summer. As you know, tonight you will be discussing the summer pool season and if that opens, it will be opening around June 20th. The board will also be discussing this evening temporarily suspending cash payments through September 14th. And if any of these actions are approved, we'll be sure to inform the public about those changes. Our meetings will remain close to the public until further notice and compliance with the governor's executive order. I anticipate that this will at least be through June 20th, but may be extended. Again, our meetings are being held over Zoom and broadcast on SCTV and agenda items that are being discussed are posted online for the public to view. Our recent executive order required municipal chief executive officers to designate an individual or multiple people to enforce the recently enacted sector rules for reopening. I've designated our chief of police, our planning director and our building official with that authority. They also have the authority to delegate that responsibility to their subordinates. This does not apply, however, to a handful of sectors in which the governor granted that authority to the Health District. So there's a few businesses such as salons, spas, tattoo parlors, that the Health District is responsible for enforcing reopening roles. Essentially, all other businesses fall under our purview. We've been receiving many inquiries from folks on how they can donate and help residents in need. So just a reminder about some of the current needs that our social services food pantry has. We are accepting donations for non-perishable food items, toiletries. Laundry and dish detergent have become a recent hot commodity. Those are very much needed and very much appreciated. Baby items such as wipes, diapers, baby food, kid-friendly snacks and gift cards to grocery stores, gas stations and laundry mats. Folks can also make financial donations and within my report, I've provided a link on how people can donate. Our most recent food distribution helped 118 households, which is an increase from the 80 households that we normally were assisting with food prior to the pandemic. Our social services staff continues their efforts to help both collect and distribute face coverings that have been made by members of our community. To date, we've now received over 1,600 donated face coverings and we've been able to distribute over 1,000 of those masks to members of our community. So really wanted to thank Social Services and our generous sewers in the community for that effort. If you are in need of a face mask, please don't hesitate to contact Social Services at 688-3283. A quick update on the property tax deferral program that you adopted recently. We have currently received and approved 31 applications for that program. That results in approximately $187,000 in deferred revenue for the first installment that will be due with the July tax bills ordinarily. And just a quick thank you to the Simsbury Main Street Partnership, Simsbury Chamber of Commerce and our Business Resource Librarian, Andrew Sherman, for continuing to do a phenomenal job supporting our business community during this time. Again, as a reminder, you can go to shop@simsbury.com for updates on all of our business openings at the moment. For department news and notes, the Planning Department is reporting that they currently have approved 10 restaurant establishments for temporary outdoor dining. You'll might recall this is an outcome from the recent governor's executive order on that. All of these requests are being reviewed by the fire marshal, the building official, the director of planning and the Health District. And we've provided more detailed information about that in my report. From Social Services, a really terrific collaborative effort with our police department recently and Social Services and our police department helped us to distribute almost 200 face masks recently to the community. And just again, really, really appreciate that effort. A reminder from our town clerk's office that June is the month to license your dog. This will be a little different this year. Oftentimes we get a lot of foot traffic that come into town hall to renew their dog licenses. We are now able to accept electronic payments through our town clerk's office so people can renew their dog licenses online. That is a new service that we can offer this year, which is quite timely given our current circumstances. We will be mailing postcard reminders out to people later this week. But again, the report will have the link for somebody to be able to go online and renew their dog license electronically. A few construction updates from engineering. The Drake Hill Road Bridge improvements, folks will probably see, starting tomorrow, some activity at the site. We do expect that the activity that will create alternating one-way traffic Monday through Friday during the day will begin around June 1st. So again, just want to remind motorists to plan accordingly if you'll be in the area. The state has a milling and paving project that's going to be occurring along Route 167, Route 4, just touching Route 44 in Simsbury. But we do expect to see increased truck traffic associated with that paving project. And we think that the completion date for that project will be around June 25th. Our work on Fire Town Road continues to progress nicely. We are hopeful that the paving work will be completed June 2nd, weather permitting. We've also, we are in the process of wrapping up the sidewalk work, which included the ADA compliant ramps. That is just an incredible project, really excited about that and that is almost complete as well. So again, just we really want to thank all of the residents in that neighborhood for their patience with us as we did that work along with the work that Aquarian did for the water utility. And that concludes my report this evening.
Okay, thank you, Maria. A lot coming on. Selectment action, item A. Earlier this evening, we had a public hearing on the Simsbury Granger's proposal under the Neighborhood Assistance Act program. So our support of this application is a requirement for the program. If the Granger is able to move forward with its application, then there's no cost to the town, but the Board of Selectmen is a part of this process. Are there any questions on this item before I see if there's a motion? Is there a motion effective May 27th, 2020, to approve the Neighborhood Assistance Act program application as presented and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to submit the application to Department of Revenue Services and further to designate Deputy Town Manager Melissa Appleby and Tom Fitzgerald as the municipal liaison? So. I heard Mike and I saw a bunch of thumbs. Jackie, are you good with a second?
I'm good with the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 The opposed, all right, our motion carries. Item B, tax refund requests. Is there a motion effective May 27th, 2020, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $1,478.86 and authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds?
So moved. I'll second it.
Oh, you got it.
I heard Jackie and Wendy on this one. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
The opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Item C is the temporary suspension of the acceptance of cash payments. Through the, you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, many businesses we know have stopped accepting cash payments as a precaution. And our town manager is recommending that we follow suit at the town level, at least through the summer. And further, she's recommending that we waive transaction fees of $5 or less, basically not wanting to deal with a lot of small checks for a few photocopies. I think that's the intent. Maria, anything you wanted to add on this item?
Sure, so this would truly be cash that we're looking to temporarily suspend. We would still be able to accept checks and electronic payments. We went cashless at the golf course recently and had some success with that. Speaking with department heads, it's something that folks feel genuinely, I think, very comfortable with doing, at least for the summer. Just again, to sort of see how things go with the pandemic and, you know, feel that it will help, you know, reduce the number of transactions that our staff are having to perform. So again, we'd be looking to temporarily suspend cash payments, waiving very nominal payments. We would propose that we would still accept payments for a $5 of less that are related to aquatics fees and golf course fees and purchases. Outside of that, the amount of fees that we collect under $5, it's fairly unusual and the numbers tend to be very small, say, for example, maybe a 50 cent copy fee or something of that nature for a map. So the impact would be rather nominal on the budget if we were to waive that for the summer. And I think that that covers the bulk of it.
Are there any questions?
Well, I was going to ask, what are some examples of like what we're waiving? And that's one part. And then why is it okay to take the cash at the pool or at the concession? Is it just to reduce the number of people coming into town hall? So that's kind of just, I'd like to know.
Sure, so again, we would be waving, excuse me, not taking cash anywhere. So if we did have a smaller transaction at the pool or at the golf course, it would be with like a credit card or a debit card. I don't know, Tom, if you want to sort of elaborate on, for example, maybe of how the golf course is accepting payment right now?
Yeah, no, they're accepting credit card. They put, they have a point-of-sale credit card at the window, so people insert their own card and then the staff doesn't touch it. With the pool concession, it'll likely, we're hoping to push people toward our what we call snack bucks. So it's basically a credit on their account. They go up, they give their last name to the cashier at the snack counter and we can deduct the cost of their fees from their account. Some people won't be able to do that, so we will take debit cards at that situation. But we didn't want to waive, well, we don't want to waive our, some people say there's a bag of chips or something. You guys are waiving the fee for it, we're not doing that.
Okay, I got it, thanks.
Good, any other questions? Thanks.
This is good practice anyway, because it's from an exposure standpoint. We don't want cash out there to begin with, so. This makes, this is good fiscal management as well.
That's a great point, and from a fraud risk standpoint, not accepting cash payments actually is a very good thing to do.
Yep, cash disappears very easily.
Okay, yeah.
Is there a motion effective May 27th, 2020, to suspend the acceptance of cash payments through September 14th, 2020? Exceptions may be authorized by the town manager or finance director. And further, to waive transactions of $5 or less through September 14th, 2020, if check or electronic payment is not practicable, aquatics fees, food concessions, transactions and all golf course fees and purchases valued at $5 or less should not be waived. This shall remain in effect until revised or rescinded. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Sean moved, Wendy seconded. Is there any other conversation? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, great, that motion passes. On a similar topic, item D is looking at reopening the Simsbury Farms Pool. Our Parks and Rec staff, Tom, I'm looking at you, has been working hard this spring, looking at what reopening the pool would look like, provided it's safe to do so. They've also been looking at the financial impact of opening the pool, where we do anticipate taking a loss this season because the pool would be accommodating fewer people. Since our last meeting, Tom Taberski, Parks and Rec Director, has put together a few options and their associated financial impact. Tom, I thought it might be helpful as a starting place to just walk through the options, the analysis that you did, just as a starting place and then open it up for conversation.
Sure, so what we started is we had the fees approved in January. We typically, we've come to you and asked for a preseason sale fee and then an in-season fee. Typically, June 1st is the changeover for the in-season fee. But when I came to you a few weeks ago, I proposed two different options for pricing. One was about half price and one was about, you know, a 25% discount, give or take a couple of dollars. And getting rid of, because we've had a delay in season passes and people weren't sure if we were going to open or not, they've held off. So we would be eliminating that in-season rate and sticking basically with the preseason rate through the season. What we're looking for is at a discount, keeping the daily rate the same. Certainly, many of our, the way many of you have remembered, Simsbury Farms Pool will look different this summer. A season pass doesn't automatically get you admission to the pool. You'll still, you'll have to reserve a spot the day ahead, the day before. A 24-hour period for residents for. A 24-hour period for resident, for resident pass holders to reserve their, their spot in a public swim session the next day. And after a certain period, anything that's left unreserved will be opened up to a daily admission that someone could sign up for that day. We're still looking at keeping it only to residents this summer, other than the four families who had bought their season passes prior to the suspension a few weeks ago. The, we've cut our season back a few weeks. Our public swim sessions are looking to be about three hours long. We are hoping to do swim lessons at about 40%, 40 to 50% capacity of what we normally do them. We have, we have been consulting with the Health District and they believe that's, that's okay to do with our plan at this point. We're waiting for the final guidelines to come out from the Department of Public Health, which hopefully is any day at this point, and then we will take those guidelines and adapt them to what we've already put together, which we think we're probably ahead of anything they're gonna put out, to be honest with you. I think we've, we've come up with a plan that's pretty comprehensive in, in getting people in and out of the pool areas safely during their time with us. Certainly, it's not everything, you know, if we get a heat wave, it's not gonna make everybody happy, and there will be some folks who, who will want to get in more than what we can accommodate them, but, you know, these are the times we're in right now. So giving you the options that I, if we were, if we were to keep the fees the same, and knowing that we're offering them a significantly less service, services than we normally would for, for the price we started selling them for back in, in late January, early February, we were, we were expecting a loss, or could expect a loss of around $45,000. By lowering that season pass price from 145 to 120, it goes up about another $10,000-ish. And we're thinking that, and this is shooting in the dark at this point, we still, we, we think many of the people will come back. We estimated these revenues at about 75% of our returning pass holders and about 50% of our daily capacity, daily walk-up admissions. That certainly could change if, if things, things change in the, in the environment that we're dealing with. If the DPH guidelines come back and say something else that we can't have 50% capacity in the pool, we get a stretch of really bad weather or cool weather that, that keeps people away. You know, our, our best guess is, this is, this is where the numbers are gonna be, 45 to 55,000. But I would, you know, my recommendation is that we, we take the option of reducing those season pass prices in recognition of the economy, where our residents are right now, and the level of service we'll be able to offer them for, for that price that we're proposing.
Great. Thanks for that overview, Tom. What questions do folks have? Jackie?
Hi, Tom.
Hi.
So we have in our meeting packet, Board of Finance was in support of opening the pool, but they're looking to keep the aquatics fee schedule the same?
They are. They're, I mean, Maria might want to speak to this more than I can, but they, the consensus was, they, they, if Maria and the Board of Selectmen support opening the pool, that we try to minimize the loss however possible and hold, hold the line on prices. You know, I think the message was, the, the loss is gonna be, have to, have to be found, or covered somewhere, and that's up to you guys eventually.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, they, they had pretty much the same view on it, Jackie, that we did at the end with supply and demand challenge, right? And from a, from an economic and a fiscal standpoint, is, is there's not gonna be much supply from a pool standpoint. And then are we gonna shift the burden to the taxpayers additionally beyond what already is there to further subsidize the pool being open when we, from a pure economic standpoint, have something to offer that people want to go to, you know, and again, we're a municipality, we're not, you know, we're not in this for a profit, but, but there is a basic economic tenet to that.
Right.
I just, I, I like the options, Tom. I also like the fact that we've included the motion about we would only open, you know, based on the safety and well-being of the town, which wasn't in the last one. So that kind of puts the onus on us and you guys to make sure that we're not just gonna open the pool. You know, it's gonna meet all the conditions. So I really like that. I also, I, I'm kind of in for, in favor of the, the preseason, current preseason rate without the in-season rate, because nobody could know what would happen. And I feel, I also feel that people would be willing to pay a little more to have the pool and to, to, you know, have less of a loss for the town.
Thanks, Wendy. The only other thing I wanted to add, and bring with everything that's been said, is that even the, if we keep the current fee schedule, it, it really is quite a value that our residents are getting, especially when you look at what a place might hot, like Hot Meadow, just people for a season cool pass, this is, this is, this is good value. I wanted to throw an idea out there. I haven't run this by anyone, and folks can tell me why this is, this is not gonna be feasible. But I wanted to see what people would think about offering. If, if anyone, Maria, you had said that there's about 30 people that applied and successfully received tax deferments because of financial hardship. I don't know if we could waive pool passes altogether for that group, but that's just something I wanted to throw out there for consideration. Because I also understand that not everyone can afford $145 right now for a pool pass.
Eric, just to, to your point, if, if they chose not to buy a pool pass, there still is the opportunity to get in at the $5 daily rate. You know, you just don't have the, you don't have the, the the advantage that pass holders do in reserving those spots ahead of time and the discount on swim lessons.
And another way for us to possibly provide some relief is we sometimes will have folks through the discretionary social worker funds, will earmark money for things like youth sports, youth swimming lessons, summer camps, things of that nature. So we may be able to provide some help sort of through that, that concept of recreational activity for young people through, through the Social Contingency Fund. That just might be another option for us to be able to help.
Great.
Hey, just to kind of on the, on the thread to what Jackie and Wendy were saying, it's a unique, I think, we're in a unique situation, obviously, and I, I don't know that I would be in favor of, of reducing the fees. And it's a sense because we're already, if, if you think about the broader taxpayer use, taxpayer base, excuse me, the, I would say the majority of them don't use the pool. I think that's fair to say, as most households don't use the pool. And we're asking them, the Board of Finances, and agreeing with us, where we're, we're essentially made the decision that we're going to, to, I don't like the word subsidize, but we're going to subsidize the pool operations this summer. So to further subsidize the pool operations by reducing the cost and then spreading that burden across a broader taxpayer base who doesn't use the pool, not necessarily in favor of that, even though I love, I, I, I'm very sympathetic to the folks, giving folks some level of, of additional assistance in these times if we can, but I think that that group that we're offering that assistance to is, is a small subset of the broader tax base, taxpayer base, so. Those are my thoughts. And I apologize if it's, if it's like a parade just entered my Zoom zone, so excuse the background noise. Go back on mute.
I love it. Okay. It sounds like there's, Mike, yeah, please.
I would be in favor of reducing the price some. I, I think there're going to be less people able to do it because of all the time constraints and everything else in light of all the stuff going on in, in our world. I, I think Chris makes some good points, but in, in light of what we're doing, I think giving people a little bit of a break is a reasonable thing to do.
Thanks, Mike. So I, I honestly, I can get behind whatever the consensus of this board is. What I'm hearing just from others is that I think most people are more comfortable leaving the fee schedule as is, at least for the, the in-season rate, eliminating the in-season rate. So if there's no more, if there's no more feedback, I could see if there's a motion to that extent. Is there anyone else who wanted to jump in? Okay. Is there a motion effective May 27, 2020, to support operating the Simsbury Farms Pool for the 2020 season, if public health and safety permits doing so? And also to retain the 2020 aquatics fee schedule as previously adopted, with the exception of eliminating the in-season rates for season passes?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I think that was Jackie on the second. Am I right?
Sure, it was.
I'm getting better at this. Is there?
Forget my name.
It was, I think it was Chris. That's all right.
Let's start out with the right name loaded, Chris.
Anything anyone wants to add? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Our last item, Item E, this is a possible sale of open space. A little bit of background here, the property owner of 133 Holcombe Street contacted the town with the hope of purchasing a parcel of open space that's abuts his property. It's a parcel that has no public access, and the proposed sale was forwarded to the Planning Commission, Conservation Commission, and Open Space Committee. In your packets is a summary of the feedback that we got from those three boards. Tonight, if, if this board is supportive, we would have the option of scheduling a public hearing to get comment on this proposed, which is a necessary step. Share that the feedback we received from those three boards was generally favorable. And the Open Space Committee did ask the town to consider placing a deed restriction on the portion of open space that would be sold so that no structures can be built on that property. I want to just open up the conversation a moment, but want to be very clear on this item, why we're talking about this particular parcel. This property owner, 133 Holcombe, also owns the Old Well Building. And the town is, for some time, has been interested in building a bike path, walking trail along Route 315 from Hot Meadow to Curtis Park. So these, while not officially linked, are linked in the, you know, for all intents and purposes, because the, the property owner is very interested in acquiring that one acre parcel of orphaned open space. And conversely, the town is interested in acquiring this land for, for building a bike path for public use. So I want to make it clear why we're talking about this particular parcel. There is no, I don't think there is interest by the Board of Selectmen at this moment to do any significant disposition of open space. Many of us abut open space. And I don't, I don't see us moving in the direction of wanting to sell that to the homeowner. The reason why we're talking about it is because of what I described previously. I wanted to open this up for questions and conversation.
Just, just to follow up, just clarity, the reason, is the reason why we're talking about it, because we've been approached with the concept. That, that was why, why you made that statement.
We've been approached by the concept and, and I'll, so the, the property owner, Stephen and Lisa Antonio, provided public comment. And in the public comment, they offered to sell the portion by the Old Well to the town at below fair market value.
I just wanted to make it clear for the, was me hiding behind blaming it on the public. I just wanted to make it clear that we're, we're all on the same side, we're talking about this in such fashion. Restating it.
Yeah, I mean, Eric, this is a pretty unique scenario, as, as you've laid out, and, you know, again, this town, 99.9% of the time, we acquire open space. We don't, we don't dispose of it. But years ago, this board had the foresight to put together a policy so that it wasn't done in darkness without proper transparency, that it was referred to open space, it was referred to planning. Because we, you know, we had thought that perhaps there was potential to do this. We were looking at the Dewey Flower Farm, and there was an opportunity to maybe transfer some of that, et cetera. We didn't ultimately do it, but we wanted to make sure we had the flexibility. And again, not to just quickly, as the state has tried to done and was referenced in the letter, just do things as, in backroom deals, but to do things with transparency. So why am I saying all this? Because I think a public hearing is important at this point, no matter which way we go. Because I think there does need to be transparency. I think we do owe the public and everybody an opportunity to hear a full presentation on this, a full vetting, ask questions, et cetera. There's nothing to hide here. And again, and then we can make an informed decision from there. That's obviously the purpose of a public hearing, right? So I, I'm, I'm in favor of scheduling it. And I also think we should be willing to potentially extend it, given the, the circumstances we have in front of us here, so that it's not just done quickly in one night. Oh, we had a public hearing, now we're gonna vote. But perhaps we do it twice, and I believe we have that right to do so. Maria, right, we're not under the same clock like a zoning or planning commission is to respond. And I don't want to drag the Antonios out here, that's not my intent. But, you know, there is a substantial amount of public interest in this. And it's a unique scenario, and it, it, it does, it, it has earned the daylight that we're able to provide to it, I guess is my point.
I, I have some, just, oh, I was just gonna add, I, I have just some concerns. So I'm glad, I'm glad it came out here that, you know, it wasn't just kind of a standalone sell this land, but it's part of something that will benefit the town in the long run. But as, as the motion tonight and the information tonight stands, it does not include any facts around that second part of why we would sell the land. So that, that's one part. The other piece I look at is just the, the selling of the open space to a resident. Does that set a precedent that any other resident that may or may not have something of value for the town could come to ask and ask to purchase the land next to their house? So that, that's another concern I have. I also, in the, in the write-up, it said that the condition of approval for that subdivision was that a portion of the land be preserved as open space due to the town. So it said that when they built the homes, yeah, I don't know what changed that to make it saleable at this point in town. And then a couple other things were, and was anyone else? I, I mean, did the land, did it have to go out to bid so that others could bid on this land that may have an interest in it? That may have a home close to that property? You know, I, that's facts I don't know. And then does this, it was mentioned in one of the proposals, or I think it's on the open space, that it could be now deemed a farm, and it changes the, what the land actually is if you go over a certain amount of acreage? And what does that do to the neighborhood, or what can or can't be done with the land? So I, I do love the idea of the easement, and I think Antonios, you know, are, are being gracious to work with us. But I also don't think that as it stands tonight, that I'm in favor of voting for it, even to move it off in the state that it's in.
Yes, what, Chris?
You know, there's, it's, I, I applaud the Antonios for the dialogue and the discourse. And there's, there, there are a few families that are engaged over the years, if these, they are in the fabric of this community and the care, emotional investment they've made. You can think about how many times that, that family's been approached to support some, some sports team, some charity event, which is just, I think of those terms that it's, it's due a broad, but it doesn't do a broader conversation absent of that. Because, I think about it, as Wendy sort of mentioned, and, you know, the, because of what has happened in the last few weeks of us being approached by people who are very much impassioned and far more informed than I am about the, the, the topic, and as Wendy just brought up, the fact that this was a part of, this was a requirement of that subdivision. So then you're sort of saying, years later, well, we can look aside of that, of that requirement, because it's sort of time has met it, or something bigger and more important superseded it. So because of these types of things, and because of allowing it to come into the open and to the light, I'm in favor. I'm in favor of moving it forward to the proper process, as Sean said, is because maybe alternative ideas of how to solve this can be brought forth. Because right now, if we just vote on it tonight, I'm looking at my iPad of where my agenda is, it's very static and it's confined with very little elasticity of interpretation or idea or thought. So I would not only hope that we would move it forward through the process of Sean mentioned, because we owe, we owe the topic light. And I hate administrative power more than anybody in this call. But it also allows us to bring forth other ideas that potentially we've missed. And through some of these phone calls that I've been approached with and some of the letters you've read, ideas have bubbled up that can't be included in tonight's motion. But might be amenable to some other folks as being a meaningful compromise. So that's why I would like to have it pushed forward.
Thanks, Chris. And Sean, did you want to get back in?
As I say, just to be clear, everything that you guys are raising is really, really important. But again, remember, all we're talking about is whether we're going to set the hearing tonight or not. Not the particulars of the deal. And, you know, these are important things to bring up as we consider whether we're going to approve it or information that you want presented at the hearing itself. But all we're being asked tonight is to, whether we're going to host a public hearing to have a full vetting and full disclosure on this issue. You're both bringing up, you know, excellent points. I don't, you know, and we don't have to decide tonight, and we're not deciding tonight, how we're going to vote on this issue.
No, we're not, Sean, but I just want to be clear to, to, to maybe overemphasize the, 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 the process here. Again, I'm a guy generally go against, but we've, we've almost been approached, and you've seen the letters you've gotten personally, the phone calls, as if there's some level of finality occurring tonight.
Yeah.
I think we need to, we encourage you, that's not at all what's happening.
None.
So even the letters that came this afternoon to us.
Yep. And all, all great points and all things we should consider. And perhaps, I think we have considered some of those options as we've gone through this, you know, town staff's been working very hard on it. And, you know, I did want to say one thing, and maybe Maria, you know, yes, there is another parcel, the, the 315 parcel, but that's not what we're voting on if we ultimately decide to do this piece or not. It is out there. But as far as a transactional standpoint goes, it is not in this transaction. They're two separate transactions, right, Maria?
Well, that's correct. Thank you, Sean. So the potential disposition is its own transaction. And that particular process does require a public hearing. It does not require you to take action that evening. You can take time to digest the information you've heard. You could act on it later in the summer or fall. And that's one, one transaction. The second transaction potentially would be the easement for the bike pass. That particular transaction does not require a public hearing, but it still would come back before the Board of Selectmen for potential approval. But they are technically two separate transactions with different processes that are required.
Yeah. And by no means am I suggesting that they're not obviously interwoven here, but we can do one without the other. From a technical standpoint, whether the landowner agrees to do that or not, but the town side, we could, we could certainly approve one and not another, or work out those deals independently. We are working those deals out independently of each other.
I heard, Mike, did you want to jump in?
I, I did. As former Chair of Planning, one of the requirements when someone comes in with a subdivision is that you are required to donate, at that point, 20 plus years ago, I believe, was when that was done. You had to give 20% of your land to the town or do a conservation easement. Since then, the rules have changed. But that's how we ended up with a lot of these landlocked parcels. And they don't do any of the town residents any good other than frankly taking, in my personal opinion, land off of the tax rolls. By getting a conservation easement, it still is on the tax rolls, is my understanding. And again, to Sean's point, and I think there are two very good points that I took out of that. This is just to bring it to public hearing. That's all we're approving tonight. And also, there are potentially two separate deals. These are not tied together. It's not one deal. And, and I think that's the appropriate way to do it. I am, I am in support of this, getting it before the public so that we can hear more conversations on it. And I really like Sean's point that he made. We probably do want to have two public hearings on this to give people, not just have them Zoom in or send us letters, but to really give them an opportunity to, to come forward to speak. I think that's important. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. There were, yes, a few things that were raised tonight that I didn't want to capture because we will want answers for them in the future. And I think one is, you know, what was raised by some folks in public audience tonight about exploring the concept of leasing and really seeing if that's something that would be amenable to the property owner, leasing instead of purchasing. The other were the questions that Wendy raised about potentially lowering their tax bill if it turns into farmland. Or does this need to be offered up to bid more broadly? And again, we're not answering those tonight, but I just wanted to make sure capture those for the future. On anything else before we vote on this issue? Okay. Is there a motion effective May 27, 2020, to schedule a public hearing for June 22, 2020 at 6:00 PM concerning the disposition slash sale of a portion of open space located along the rear eastern property line for 133 Holcombe Street?
So moved.
I can second.
Is there any further dialogue? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye, or nay?
The motion does pass by a vote of five to one. That does it for selectman action. Are there any feedback on the minutes from our last meeting, May 11? Okay, then they'll stand. Are there any selectman liaison or subcommittee reports?
You took mine, so I, about the Tecton deal, so I don't have.
This is a big, this is a big deal. So why don't you reiterate that if you don't mind?
Well, oh, in case somebody was, just that the Board of, Board of Ed voted to move forward with Tecton to pursue the addition of a sixth grade so that Henry James would be sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And, and then to also renovate as new Latimer Lane School. And then they're going to move forward and discuss with the Board of Finance or the Selectmen in the future.
Yeah, and I spoke tonight, this afternoon with Chair of the Board of Ed, who again emphasized that this was a significant step in the process, but it was, it was a step. This is not a foregone conclusion. And, and the next public meeting that I'm aware of is July 26, when there'll be a Tecton presentation to the Board of Finance. Any other reports?
Just informational, Tom's team has a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00, 6:00 PM, Culture Parks and Rec. Zoom, another Zoom meeting for all those who are dying to get onto another Zoom call, tomorrow night, six o'clock.
Great, thank you. Sean?
Just quick, we are not having a public safety meeting tomorrow morning. So folks that are, are tuning into the regularly scheduled program, it's not, we are, we have gone back to, or we're going to a two-week cadence. And then we're going to reevaluate from there once we get into June, how frequent we have them. Again, I think, you know, the meetings have been important, appreciated all your feedback and all of your guys' participation. But trying to respect first responders, professionals, town staff time. There hasn't been a lot of new information at this point other than really from Jennifer Petennis and the Health District on how things are evolving with the state. So we're definitely going to, again, keep them on a, on a two-week basis here, but and keep, keep that information flowing for the public. And again, Maria, can't say enough how awesome I think you and your staff have done, team have done. Whether it be your daily reports to us from a, from a COVID update standpoint, preparing for that meeting, working with the business community, working with the police department, others, just, I know there's no playbook on this one, and I think you guys have done an outstanding job under pretty damn tough circumstances. And then again, staffing this meeting and everything else, just, I've been involved in a lot of disasters on my near decade on here and this town has always, always risen to the occasion and this is, this is no exception. So well done.
Thank you, Sean. Thanks so much. You know, I feel so fortunate. We just have the most incredible leadership team and our staff has just really risen to the occasion and have been so committed to making sure that our essential services remain in place. So I feel fortunate. I think that the community is so lucky to have such a great team, working so hard for them right now. And we have great community partners. So thank, thank you.
I just want to say that I've attended all those meetings, eight o'clock with my coffee every Thursday morning since the beginning of the pandemic. And it was great to be on that call to hear what's going on in town because I was feeling very disconnected. And I want to say that I thought, Sean, that you're a great facilitator of that meeting, along with everybody else that participated.
Thank you. I appreciate that. As I said before, I had the easy job. All these, all these guys doing their, doing their jobs above and beyond every day is the hard work. So thank them.
Anybody else before we move on with the subcommittee liaison reports? Hey, anything under communication that anyone wanted to raise? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss pending claims regarding our Newton? We'd be joined by Maria Capriola, Mike Harrington, anyone else from staff, Maria, that I'm missing? Okay. Is there a motion to that extent? Sean?
Second.
Mike seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.